Good evening. My name is Brandon Monk and I serve as Chair of the Frederick County School Board. And today is Tuesday, August the 15th, and it's a little after 6:00 PM. And I'll go ahead and call this meeting of the school board to order. We have before us an agenda. Are there any proposed amendments? Dr. Oh, right.
Motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion that's been properly made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the county school board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following: to review and discuss appointments, administrative appointments, resignations, information only, substitutes, and the goals of the superintendent pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A1, and to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including requests for release from compulsory attendance for religious reasons and violations of the Code of Conduct pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A2.
Second.
We have a motion and second to move into closed session. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're in closed session. We reconvene approximately 7:00 PM.
I move that the board reconvene from closed session.
Second.
We have a motion and second to reconvene. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are reconvened.
I move that, to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we have two motions coming out of closed session. I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the release of students A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, and R from compulsory attendance for religious reasons.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the students that the vice chair mentioned for attendance from religious reasons. Whew. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, will you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Next, please join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We have a consent agenda before us. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is an opportunity for us to recognize our students and staff, and with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hummer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening and welcome to our Awards of Excellence program. Before we proceed, I would like to ask that everyone stay here through the entire program out of respect of each individual who is going to be recognized. Once we have completed all of the presentations, we will give you an opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. In addition, when you come forward for your certificate or to be acknowledged as a school, please take a moment to pause with Mr. Monk and myself for a photograph. Then move to the right, remain at the front, and we'll take a picture of the entire group when we're recognized. So, Mr. Chair, myself, are going to head on down, and we will start our announcements. Thank you.
In July, Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle School student Grayson Henry traveled to Denver, Colorado to compete in the 2023 FCC LA National Leadership Conference. Grayson earned a silver medal in the Nation Star Event Competition. He competed in the repurpose and redesign category. Grayson created a robot piggy bank out of recycled materials like old plastic and wood. His project was titled Be the Change: Recycle, Save the Future. Family Career and Community Leaders of America, FCC LA is a national career and technical student organization for students in family and consumer sciences education. Grayson, please come up. Oh, you're up? Thank you. Need to look up. James Wood High School senior Tyson Robertson is a winner in the Congressional Art Show. His piece Otis will be hanging in the U.S. Capitol Building. Tyson went to Washington, DC on June 20th to be recognized for his achievement during a reception with other Congressional Art Show winners. Tyson, come on down. in the 97th State FFA Convention at Virginia Tech held in June. Future Farmers of America, FFA is an inter-curricular student organization for those interested in agriculture and leadership. From James Wood High School, the Food Science Team, first place team, if we could have Lauren Environmental and Natural Resources Competition, fourth place team, apt in Great House, and Madison Rohrbach, please come up. Milk Quality Products, fourth place team, Braylon Durbin, Josh Hardy, Lilani Teal, please come up. The Competition of Senior Ag Mechanics, Walter Davis, fifth place. From Millbrook High School for Floriculture, Caroline Fox, ninth place. From Shorando High School, Milk Quality and Products, CDE, first place team, Fatima Reyes, second place high individual, Kayden Showmaker, third place high individual, Rebecca Stout, fourth place high individual, and Emma Wise Carver, eighth place high individual, Flora Culture, CDE, third place team, Savannah Judy and Harley Wilson, and also please remain up here as we read through the next couple of announcements. Come on up. Nursery and Landscape, CDE, third place team, Caleb Green and Jericho Turman, also please So, the reason that these are all staying Horticulture, CDE, these four were a second place team. In the category of Senior Ag Mechanics, fourth place team, Keller Cooley, Mason Patterson, and Blake Sneddon, please come forward. And for our Junior Ag Mechanics, fifth place team, Corinne Cooley, Bella Walters, Savannah Woolford, and Hayden Williams, Hayden was a ninth place high individual, please come And if Elise Stein-Dalner could please come forward. Bright Futures Frederick Winchester was a recipient of the Food for Thought Award at the VSB A Conference on Education held in July. Bright Futures Frederick Winchester was in the category of Meals, Meal Access to Fight Hunger. Bright Futures Frederick Winchester was recognized for their work combating student hunger through their Weekend Food Pack Program that serves more than 1,300 students a week, and Summer Food Distribution Program that feeds more than 4,000 students a summer. The Food for Thought competition was created in 2012 to educate, engage, and empower school leaders to address childhood hunger and provide all students in Virginia with healthier, more nutritious school meals. Elise Stein-Dalner is the program coordinator for Bright Futures Frederick Winchester.
Thank you. Number one, congratulations to everyone, super excited. We just have a phenomenal community here that is represented by amazing educators and staff and ultimately serving some phenomenal students. So whether it be our FCC LA folks, our FFA folks, our Bright Futures program, our artists and designers and other programs, singers, band music, we could go on and on. And I'm super excited, and I think it's humbling for us as school board members to recognize you here. So thank you for being here. Thank you for those who are supporters in the audience for taking time to be here and recognizing some amazing accomplishments by our students. So thank you so much. With that, we will move on to administrative assignments and then give you folks an opportunity to get on with your evening if you'd like to.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two administrative appointments. If Robin Schrum can please come on up, please. Robin Schrum will be the new Assistant Principal at Middletown Elementary School effective August 16th, 2023. Dr. Schrum comes to us from Shenandoah County Public Schools, where she has been an elementary school principal for 10 years, an elementary school assistant principal for five years. Dr. Schrum has also served 13 years as a teacher. She earned her bachelor's in vocal performance and music education from Ithaca College, her master's of education in music education, master of science and administrative leadership, and doctorate in administration and leadership from Shenandoah University. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Schrum to Frederick County Public Schools.
Dr. Hummer, Mr. Chairman and school board, thank you so much. I'm so excited about this opportunity and can't wait to get my school year started tomorrow. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Schrum.
Next up, I am honored to announce our new principal at Admiral Byrd. If Chris Hickey can come on up, please. Chris Hickey will be the new principal at Admiral Byrd Middle School effective August 21st, 2023. Mrs. Hickey brings a wealth of experience to this position. In addition to serving in her current role as an assistant principal at Shorando High School for the past five years, she was an assistant principal at James Wood Middle School for four years, and she has 25 years of teaching experience at the elementary and middle school level. Mrs. Hickey earned her bachelor's in special education from the College of New Jersey, a master's in language and reading cultures from the University of Arizona, and a postmaster's certificate in administration and supervision from Virginia Commonwealth University. Please join me in welcoming Mrs. Hickey to her new role.
I just wanted to point out, my husband is here with me, supporting me, so thank you. Chairman Monk, members of the board, and Dr. Hummer, good evening. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to lead Admiral Byrd Middle School. I know they have a fantastic reputation, and I'm really looking forward and excited to start my journey with that school on Monday. And so, thank you for that opportunity, appreciate it. Thank you.
That is all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. Welcome, Dr. Schrum and Mrs. Hickey, super excited to have you, new to our division, but also returning in a new role in some cases, so excited to have you here. Thank you for what you're going to do on behalf of students, starting tomorrow in new capacities. So, congratulations. With that, if you've come for the recognition portion of our evening, I'd invite you to stay if you'd like, and you're more than welcome to leave and get on with your evening. But thank you again for taking the time to celebrate our students and our community.
It was one and the same thing.
Some of those FFA students were the same as the parliamentary procedure. There were two, I think, here. I've asked them to stay in the [inaudible].
Should I say, you know?
And this little boy, three years old, his mom and dad went out and bought a piano. And the kid just sat down and started playing Mozart, you know? Obviously, he played with the house. But, I mean, he just, it's a gift. So he sat down, he was playing all this stuff, and he did so well.
Next is the Citizen and Staff Comments section of our meeting. We've had two folks that have signed up, and I'll share that the Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting. In order to allow the board sufficient time for its other business, the total time allotted for public comment will generally be limited to 20 minutes. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes, and those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes, with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the chair, the speakers should clearly state their name, residing district, and the subject of their comments. All comments are to be addressed to the chair. The board will receive comments but will not respond to questions or engage in a dialogue. This is an opportunity to be heard, and the board will refer any issues or concerns to staff or appropriate committees. The school board is committed to showing appropriate respect and courtesy to all citizens, and speakers are expected to show that same respect and courtesy to the board. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. School board meetings are tape-recorded for the purpose of clarification and the development of official minutes. Our first speaker is Jonathan Mills. If you could come forward, state your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please.
My name is Jonathan Mills. I'm part of the Gainesboro School District. I didn't write anything down today because it kind of was an event that happened today, and it happened a little bit last year, and we looked up the time, and it was like, it's tonight. So, I apologize if everything is a little bit out of order. So, it's a concern to me where, when you, the primary address for students, like, I have three kids in elementary school, one kid at the middle school, and one kid at James Wood. And we had an issue with buses today, bus scheduling, sending notes home last year. They're dual status, they're dual parent households. A lot of the times, somebody has primary custody, in this case, nobody has primary custody. It's split 50/50, right down the middle. And last year, we had issues with getting kids signed up for buses. It cost me over $100,000 to get custody of my kids, the way that we have it right now. And to be listed as a caregiver rather than primary residence, when it is, you know, half the time, it's their primary residence, it's a concern. And the school doesn't seem to be able to change anything or do anything about that. Like, I'm not writing notes to my kids when I've already turned in the court order every week to which house they're going to. It's set in stone, judge signed off on it. It needs to, it needs to be something. And like, when it comes to the high school, they said that there is no caregiver status for like bus schedules or anything like that for the high school. It's just primary residence, and that's it. What am I supposed to do in that case? Like, there's, he's just going to get on the bus and go where he wants to because the bus driver might not let him on, and it's just an issue we ran into today. I'm not a caregiver, I'm the kids, I'm their dad. I worked really hard for that, and it's upsetting that I'm even second tier still. The kids get sick, they call mom, and then mom calls me and I go get them. Like, it's not every time, but, I mean, I have equal rights across the board, and it doesn't come off that way a lot of the time. Yeah, it's pretty much all I have for that. But I just, I hope that there's some way, I mean, it's not very hard with any of the systems to have like systems to have like a dual status situation and be able to code them as that. So like, this is their primary residence, this is their primary residence. And I don't want to have to write a note every week to like, hey, the kids are visiting their dad, they're not visiting, they live there. Yeah, that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Adams. Come forward, state your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please.
My name is Chris Adams, I'm in the Shawnee District. Wanted to thank Dr. Hummer for following through on resurfacing of the auditorium stage at Millbrook High School. In May of this year, my wife and I had a discussion with Dr. Hummer regarding the poor condition of the stage floor. We noted that previous requests prior to his arrival in Frederick County to address this had gone without response. Dr. Hummer said he would look into it, and he did look into it. The stage was recently repaired and resurfaced. I have yet to see it. I'm told it looks terrific. So thank you, sir. I also wanted to thank Dr. Hummer for making it easy for parents to find the document to restrict access to explicit books in the Frederick County Public School libraries by having a direct link on the FCPS homepage, as well as on the website for each school. This is a big step forward in putting some of the control over our children back into the hands of their parents. Once again, thank you, sir. You're proving yourself to be a man of your word. Appreciate it. I also wondered, how many DWI and intoxication and public charges are acceptable for a member of the school board to be charged with? In addition, is there a rule that allows school board members to not pay $1,201 in personal property tax? Or is this something special for Ludwig-supported school board members or just Mr. Atkins that is permitted to break the law and neglect his tax payments without consequence? Sets a poor example for our children in the FCPS school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mills, just want to share that we'll have someone follow up with you as well. And Dr. Hummer, thank you for that. All right. Thank you, everyone, for their comments. Next, we'll move on to reports. Report of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Hummer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got quite a few items to report here. We had an amazing transition day and also a first day of school today, so please bear with me here. First, again, as the chair had stated, congratulations again to all of our students who received awards today, as well as the recognition for Bright Futures. We have a lot of great things happening here in Frederick County, and it means a lot to take some time to celebrate our accomplishments, our successes, and the great things our students are doing. I also, again, want to welcome our new administrators to Frederick County, starting a new chapter in their careers, and I welcome them to our family and looking forward to the great things that they are going to do. As you all know, we started this school year off with a transition day, and the feedback we've received thus far has been beyond amazing. I heard from students, parents, teachers, administrators, bus drivers, and other stakeholders, and they all felt that the day really helped with the transition into this new school year. I also enjoyed seeing our students experience a feeling of relief as they became familiar with their school on a less crowded level. I also helped a student find the water fountain, and he said to me, "I was a little worried that I wasn't going to be able to find the water fountain, and now the hallways are less crowded, I know exactly where it is." And that is a true story. So I'm very, very impressed and very thankful that we had moved forward with this day. The transition day also helped us catapult into this new school year for everyone else, which also went very, very well today. I was able to make it out to numerous schools yesterday and today, and I'm so excited for our students, our parents, our staff, our community, as we start off to another great year of learning, critical thinking, collaborating, innovation, and creativity here in Frederick County. I also want to thank our James Wood High School administration staff, students, and families for being so patient with the renovation and opening this past Monday. We definitely experienced a lot of roadblocks, but with great resiliency and hard work, we were able to open on time yesterday. We had technology, construction, maintenance, the superintendent, other staff going in over the weekend to make sure that everything was going to be in order coming into Monday, and we were all working late into the evening, which was very, very greatly appreciated. We also want to thank our fire marshal for supporting us and through the inspection process and making sure that our schools are safe. We still have some work to do with the renovation, but we are definitely moving forward in the right direction. Lastly, I want to recognize our finance department for receiving the 2023-24 Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International. This award has been presented to Frederick County Public Schools for the last 11 years and is a testament to their commitment to sound fiscal management, excellence in budget presentation, and budgetary policies. So that is all I had, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Hummer? Wonderful. Next, we'll move to unfinished business. First item on the agenda is Policy 102P: Duties and Powers. This is the second reading of this, as it is a policy change. Any question, last-minute questions that board members might have about Policy 102P: Bylaws, Duties, and Powers? All right. With that, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Policy 102P: Bylaws, Duties, and Powers.
Second.
We have a motion that has been made and properly seconded to adopt Policy 102P: Bylaws, Duties, and Powers. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, before us, we have Policy 106P: Bylaws, Conflict of Interest, and Disclosure of Economic Interests. Again, second reading. Any questions from board members?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the amendments to Policy 106P: Bylaws, Conflict of Interest, and Disclosure of Economic Interests.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to adopt Policy 106P: Bylaws, Conflict of Interest, and Disclosure of Economic Interests. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Policy 116P: Bylaws, Board Minutes, Recording Votes, and Tie Votes. Again, the second reading of this. Any questions for board? All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the amendments to Policy 116P: Bylaws, Board Minutes, Recording Votes, and Tie Votes.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to adopt Policy 116P: Bylaws, Board Minutes, Recording Votes, and Tie Votes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, Policy 126P: Bylaws, School Board Member in Service Activities. Any questions from board members? Mr. Vice Chair, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the amendments to Policy 126P: Bylaws, School Board Member in Service Activities.
Second.
All right. Motion's been properly seconded. I thought John Wayne was coming for a minute, so. Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Wonderful. That moves us to new, new business, and we have the committee report of the Student Conduct and Support Committee. Mr. Lake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hope I can follow that. The Student Conduct and Support Committee met at Frederick County Public Schools Admin Building on June 27th, meeting called to order at 4:43. Copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, the committee went into closed session to review and discuss individual student matters that would affect specific student and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including violations of the Code of Student Conduct pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711, 8.2. After reconvening and certifying the closed session, the committee voted unanimously to expel student A for 365 days and referred the student to the IEP team on a 3-to-0 vote. The matter does not require further action by the full board, and our meeting adjourned at 5:50 p.m. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes and provided to board members. Do any of the board members have any questions about what was convened on the Student Conduct and Support Committee held on June 27th? Okay. We only have one action item coming out of that meeting, and that is to recommend approval of the minutes from the Student Conduct and Support Committee meeting held June 27th, 2023, and I do so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the minutes of the school board meeting for the Student Conduct and Support Committee. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next report is the report of our Buildings and Grounds Committee. Mr. Comstock.
Mr. Chairman, the Buildings and Grounds Committee met at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on August 1st. The meeting was called to order at 4:30 p.m., and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Crispin reviewed the capital projects list and provided an update on the modulars being installed at Jordan Springs Elementary School and Shurando High School. Mr. Crispin shared that there is a delay in the modulars being installed at Jordan Springs Elementary School that will impact the location of fourth-grade students. The delay is due to an issue with decking and ramping, the location of a power pole, lead times on single-phase distribution panels and breakers, and permits and requirements from the Frederick County Government. Mr. Crispin shared the project is approximately two weeks behind schedule. Mr. Crispin stated that the modular project at Shurando High School is on schedule. Mr. Goodwin shared there would be a full presentation to the Buildings and Grounds Committee next month regarding the truncated rezoning project. Mr. Kenny provided updates to the ongoing construction projects at Indian Hollow Elementary School and James Wood High School. Mr. Kenny shared an underground fuel tank that was abandoned in 1995 was in the way of the new drainage system at Indian Hollow Elementary School, and the environmental group ECS came to the school to review the situation. The tank has been removed. When preparing to pour the sidewalks, it was discovered that the gym walls were not properly tied together. Repairs regarding this issue have been completed. The status of interior spaces and new daylighting introduced to the building were reviewed. Mr. Kenny stated the project is approximately six months ahead of schedule. Mr. Kenny provided updates about the construction project at James Wood High School. He shared information about the new entrance and parent loop, as well as other portions of the interior projects that have been completed to date. Staff addressed board member questions to include parking, ceiling-to-floor restroom stalls, and the building design being brought forward to the school board for a vote. Staff shared that the construction project was approved using CMAR instead of design-build. Mr. Kenny explained the benefit of using CMAR instead of design-build, and Dr. Hummer also provided further explanation about the CMAR process. Ms. Rinker shared that Subaru of Winchester was going to provide a structure for an outdoor learning space at Orchard View Elementary School. Mr. Goodwin shared that a neighboring landowner to Frederick County Middle School has requested to have one-time access to the property of Frederick County Middle School to move a piece of heavy equipment onto his property. The request to move the heavy equipment would take place between August 16th and 30th, 2023. Committee heard Mr. Crispin discuss the issue of the cracking of the retaining wall at Frederick County Middle School, and bids are being sought from local contractors. Mr. Crispin also shared that a wall on the south side of the building has some cracks and was being examined by the engineering team. The meeting adjourned at 5:49 p.m. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on August 1st? We have two action items, Mr. Chairman, coming out of the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Recommend the full board consider approving the request for the landowner to have one-time access to Frederick County Middle School's property to move a piece of heavy equipment to the landowner's property.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to have the full board approve the request for the landowner to have one-time access to Frederick County Middle School's property to move a piece of heavy equipment at the landowner's property.
Just for the benefit of the board, there's a copy of the license agreement in your paperwork there, if you'd like to review that. But this landowner came forward his piece of property, it joins Frederick County Middle School's property, and he does have a separate easement to it, but access would be over train tracks and kind of difficult, so he's requesting to come through kind of a vacant portion of our land off of Gainsborough Road to load that equipment onto his property so he can do some grading and work to his property.
Any questions from board members about the motion? Or any discussion? All right. With that, we'll proceed to vote. This vote is to allow the landowner to have one-time access to Frederick County Middle School's property to move a piece of heavy equipment onto the landowner's property. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I also recommend approval of the minutes from the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on August 1st, 2023.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the minutes from the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on August 1st, 2023. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Next is the report of our Finance Committee. Mr. Hester.
Yes. The Finance Committee met in the Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Meeting Room at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on August 10th. The meeting was called to order at 4:05 p.m., and a copy of the minutes have been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Anderson reviewed the VPSA, Virginia Public School Authority Educational Technology Funds. The primary purpose of the funds is to establish a computer-based instructional and testing system for the Standards of Learning, SOL, and develop the capability for high-speed internet connectivity. Frederick County Public Schools has allocated a total of $570,000. InRep receives $26,000. Funds are received in April, which makes it difficult to spend before June 30, year end. A resolution allows for FCPS to spend the funds now and reimburse ourselves in April when funds are received. Mrs. Seibert reviewed the internal audit results. There were no findings in any of the financial audited areas. Mrs. Seibert shared audits are performed twice a year, and this is the second time IT has been included in the audit. IT's audit consists of computer inventory and student device inventory, which is just under 20,000 items. There were no findings for IT. Mrs. Camery reviewed the Memo of Understanding, MOU, for school resource officers, SROs. Mrs. Camery shared that by state code, the MOU must be out for 10 days for public comment. The MOU is for a two-year period, and there are no substantial updates. Mr. Goodwin reviewed the FY24 transportation adjustments. The adjustments will place eight drivers and two aides on a seven-hour contract. Hours of a current driver position will be adjusted to create a driver and trainer 12-month position. In surveying bus drivers, it was found there was a desire for the attendance bonus for bus driver to be paid out monthly opposed to twice annually. The adjustments will add two hours for in-service trainings and create a van driver pay scale. The funding for these adjustments would come from freezing 10 vacant driver positions. Mrs. Camery reviewed the role of parent organizations that help advance programs that support and improve educational opportunities for all students. Examples of these groups include but are not limited to parent-teacher organizations, booster groups, parent councils, and athletic associations. Career and technical student organizations, CTSOs, do not fall under this category. Parent organizations are independent of Frederick County Public Schools and operate separately from school-sponsored groups. Mrs. Camery reviewed the requirements for parent organizations and the role of the school administrator. Mrs. Freckley reviewed the proclamation of Substitute Appreciation Day as November 17. She shared that substitutes would receive one voucher for a free lunch and a recognition banner will be placed at each FCPS building. The approximate cost would be $2,838 for reusable banners and $760 for lunch vouchers. The meeting adjourned at approximately 4:55 on a 2-0 vote. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meetings are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Finance Committee meeting held on August 10th? We do have several action items that are coming out of this, but I would like to just publicly state, you know, we had a discussion about the audit on technology, and that's the second, it's the second year that we've had this, and they came out with no findings this year. And for us to have 20,000 items within our school system, every time a, you know, student comes in and things like that, teacher leaves or teacher comes in, we're accounting for every single piece of electronic equipment. And Chad Foreman, who I've known for years, has been working on that, and I just wanted to thank him. to thank him for that. So, we do have some action items that come out of that. First one is to recommend the full board approval, approve the resolution for VPSA Educational Technology Funds declaring intent to reimburse itself for qualifying expenditures.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded that the full board approve the resolution for VPSA Educational Technology Funds declaring intent to reimburse itself for qualifying expenditures. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second action item, recommend the full board approve proclaiming November 17 as Substitute Appreciation Day.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, is there any discussion? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries.
And the last action item, recommend full board approval of the minutes from the Finance Committee Meeting held on August 10, 2023.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded that the full board approve the minutes from the Finance Committee Meeting held on August 10, 2023. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next, we have a 4S Policy 418P Students, Students Insurance. Dr. Hammer, do you have anything you'd like to share about the policy?
Not that the student insurance policy is to add on, that we now are insuring students for accidents, and if you have any questions, Mrs. Camery can definitely answer that, but it's something that we had a discussion about, making sure that we are protecting ourselves and making sure that we are supporting our students if they do get hurt on our watch. So, something that we wanted to add on in our policy, didn't allow that before, and we wanted to make that adjustment.
All right. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend to the full board approval for Policy 418P Students, Student Insurance.
Second.
All right. There's a motion to approve proposed amendments for Policy 418P Students, Student Insurance. It's been made and properly seconded. I'll just share, I want to commend Dr. Hammer and staff for this and bringing it forward and providing some liability protection for us long-term. Really quick turnaround on this, so appreciate that. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor of approving Policy 418P Students, Student Insurance as presented in the amendments before us, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Next is Policy 559P Personnel Military Leave.
Just want to add to this, this was adding the term benefits to this particular policy to make sure that we are supporting our armed forces, that if they do have to go on military leave, they do receive those benefits. And then I also have a regulation that will follow suit, and we'll make sure that we share that with you as well, with those specific updates. But this is mainly just adding that piece of benefits to this particular policy, and then Mrs. Camery can add any details if she feels necessary. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Hammer. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No motion.
Oh, no motions. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amendment to Policy 559P Personnel Military Leave.
Second.
Wonderful. We now have a motion and a second. Thank you, Mr. Atkins and Mr. Hester. Any discussion? All in favor of approving Policy 559P Personnel Military Leave as presented before us, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, it takes us to the Virginia School Board Association Delegates. Each year, the VSBA has a delegate assembly, and we are looking to select an alternate, a delegate and an alternate to participate in that process from this board. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Can I add a comment or two?
Sure. Mr. Lake.
Since I've done this about the last eight years, we, every school division in the state during the year can make recommendations to VSBA for changes, sort of like policies, if you will, think about it like that. And the VSBA collects these changes during the year, and they put them in a book format. And then each school division at the annual conference in Williamsburg, which is the week before Thanksgiving, has a meeting, about a two-hour meeting, and all 132 school divisions are represented there at the meeting, the delegate, and that's what we're talking about here. To go over all of those items throughout the state that have been presented by different school boards, changing, I mean, it's been a whole litany of type of, from legal, transportation, sports, everything you can imagine over the years. And the entire delegation then votes, and it's by a majority vote of 132 school divisions, which can be, by the way, a very interesting process. But anyway, that's what this is about, and so we always send a delegate, we always pick a backup for the delegate. And the reason I wanted to speak, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, it's public knowledge that I am not seeking reelection, and so I will not be carrying on after January. So I don't know about, you know, being, you know, doing this this year, I think someone else actually should, but just to know that you're making a commitment to say you're actually going to the conference in November, because there is going to be a booklet, it's going to be things that we're supposed to go over and read, go over with the superintendent and/or his representatives, and get Frederick County's position on this, because we're going to go down there and vote on these things. And so if someone else was going to make a commitment that say they, someone that's going to be here, I guess that's what I'm saying, and are going to the convention, I would certainly help them and kind of, you know, walk through the process, but, you know, if anybody else is gone, it's all yours, I guess that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Appreciate the context and thought process behind that. So this is something that I believe we have until the 18th, so we need to share this.
Today.
Today? Okay. So what is the pleasure of the board? Is there anyone that would like to serve in this role? Anyone that...
I will be going down to Williamsburg this year and would be happy to step in if Mr. Lake's not wanting to do it this year.
Okay. All right.
If I second a motion. Well, I can't motion.
So...
I will be there, and I'd be happy to step in if there's nobody else going down to Williamsburg or wanting to step in.
Okay. Wonderful. Is there anyone else that would be...
I'll be the alternate.
Okay. Can we get those two things in the form of a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mr. Hester as the VSBA representative for Frederick County and myself as the alternate.
All right. And we've got a second. Motion has been made and properly seconded to nominate Mr. Hester as our delegate and Mr. Atkins as our alternate for this year for the VSBA Delegate Assembly. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. That next brings us to the portion of our agenda reserved for board member comments. Are there any?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lake.
First, want to recognize Charlie out at Indian Hollow Elementary School. Charlie, we're thinking about you and hope your battle is going well. We had, let's see, August 7th, I attended some SRO training. It's impressive to see what the SROs do in a week of training. They attack buses, they do testing, they do, they stick their fingers in bleeding arms, it's, some of the stuff is kind of disgusting, but anyway. My wife and I went for a two-hour session on August 7th for SRO training out at the Public Safety Building, and it was really impressive what they go through. August 9th, went to the ribbon cutting at James Wood High School. August 10th, went to ribbon cutting at Indian Hollow Elementary School. And today, I was at Frederick County Middle School and Gainesboro Elementary School for Meet the Bus on the first day of school, so I want to thank Dr. Putt and Patty Black for their hospitality today. And I'll just remind everybody that we are in the throes, I mean, right now, of all sports. There's five varsity sports in our high schools, we have a number of sports in our middle schools. I see the schedules, because some of you may know I'm a local football official, and I see the schedules, and I mean, there is something, there is something every day, every day of the week, there is something, whether it's cross-country or golf or football or volleyball. It's, and again, a lot of the sports are at middle school as well as high school, and in high school, you've got JV and you've got varsity, it's just happening everywhere. So I want to get it, have everybody get out and support your sports teams. In the packet tonight, I think everybody probably knows, you have your VSBA passes that get you in anywhere, anywhere for the entire year, playoffs, state championships, anything. So take advantage of it. It's a great time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. We will not hold your officiating against you.
Good.
No. Mr. Hester.
Yeah. First of all, you know, I always enjoy these nights where we're recognizing all the good stuff that we have going on, and it just amazes me, the FFA stuff, I mean, there's always, just the stuff that they're becoming experts in and competing in on the local, national, regional level. It really is really neat, and then we've got, you know, as we saw tonight, artists, and it's across the board, and I've always said, you know, it's those things that really bring, you know, a smile to my face, and, you know, I want to commend Dr. Hammer for the Transition Day. That was a great idea. You know, I am going to take something that Dr. Angelo was saying before the meeting, but it's true in the fact that everybody just seemed more calm today, you know, especially with the Transition Day yesterday for those entering the school. My, it was funny, my youngest, who's sitting over there, said, Dad, I'm a big girl now because I'm old, I'm an old kid in the school and I don't have to go to Transition Day. And I was like, as a parent, I was like, well, I wish you had to go to Transition, no. But it was, you know, a great day for all those students. I have a number of neighbors that, you know, their children were very excited about Transition Day, and it really was a great idea and a great implementation this year. I also want to commend you for all, you and your staff for all the hard work you've put into making this your first official school opening, and it was a great success. I mean, we, a lot of smiling kids coming back to school, and, you know, it was fun. It's hard for me to get out like Mr. Lake on these days because I have three girls that, you know, I've got one in elementary, middle, and high school, so it's all different times, and you're all trying to make sure that they've got their outfits on and stuff. So it's, you know, it's a little bit different than, you know, what Mr. Lake did this morning, but, you know, it's always a joy when the kids go back to school. So I also want to commend Mrs. Camery and the Finance Department. Your awards seem like a norm now, so I, you know, please take that as a compliment, but it's just all the hard work you guys put in on a daily, on a yearly basis with our financials, and it's just very impressive, and I've always been very impressed with your staff and your reporting and things like that. So, again, there's just a lot of good stuff going on in our school system, and I just want to commend everybody for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hester.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I had the opportunity to attend the new employee welcoming, and what an event it was. It was really nice to welcome all of our new employees and hear a little bit about them, and thank you for choosing FCPS, and we're really glad to have you and hope that you can bring all of your skills and expertise to make us even better. And the students today, I met a young lady in the hall that was her first competition, and she placed in her very first competition, so that's a testament to some of the excellence that are going on, especially in our FFA programs, and the gentleman that was in second place, that he won for Be the Change. So our students are courageous enough to try something different and actually be the change, and so I think that that says a lot about us, and very proud to be representing the Redbud District, and proud of our students, and so grateful to have some amazing people here.
Thank you. Other comments from the board? Mr. Atkins.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Hammer for, you know, being the captain of the ship and, you know, providing good structure and leadership for our administrators and our staff, our teachers in welcoming our students in on the first day of school. I mean, everything is, just went swimmingly. I've, you know, gotten reports from parents at Millbrook and Shorando, and, you know, they are tickled pink about, you know, the Transition Day for freshmen. Actually, Dr. Angelo and I were kind of talking about that before the meeting, and it's just a testament to the hard work that our superintendent and our assistant sups and our principals actually, you know, put in. There's a lot of foresight and planning that goes into this, and all that happens during the summer. So, you know, thank you to all those administrators and teachers who've actually taken time out of their summer and kind of sit by the pool and, or go to the beach, or we're working from the beach or whatever to make this a successful first day. I'd like to thank all the, or show recognition to all of the students today who were recognized for the FFA accolades, art projects, and the rest of it. It's really great to see that, and it's a great way to kick off the new school year. So, you know, to all the students and staff out there, let's have a great 2023, 2024 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Other comments from the board? Mr. Comstock.
Just echo those sentiments about the students. It was kind of energizing to walk in here and see all of those students here and then be able to celebrate with them, and that just speaks to the things beyond reading and math and test scores that our students are getting and experiencing and real-life skills, and so it's really nice to see that and celebrate that with them. We did, like Mr. Lake, get to attend some ribbon cuttings this week, and that was really exciting to see those buildings kind of renewed and new life poured into them, and they're going to last us for a long time now, and so I'm excited about those learning spaces and for our students that are going to get to experience those, so thanks for that. And then, just as a parent with a kindergartner and a fourth grader, I got to experience the Transition Day firsthand, and, you know, as a parent who both my spouse and I were kind of nervous about our little guy entering kindergarten, it went amazingly well, and it was just, it was a really, really good day for him. And I think, you know, all of the things that have been shared about that, it just, they're very, very true, and I've heard from parents at all levels, kindergarten, sixth and ninth, about how much they enjoyed that and how much the students enjoyed that, and so thanks for that, and just excited to have our students back, and appreciative for all of the teachers, the bus drivers, the staff at all levels. It takes all, what are we at, 2,300, 2,400 people that we employ to make this happen, and we're appreciative for all of them, so thank you for what you do every day.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Any other comments from board members? And I'll just echo those sentiments that the board members shared, and first want to thank the board. I've seen many of you at events around the community, school-related events, sporting events, academic-related events, teachers' events, and so I think one of the things that I have been thankful for in Dr. Hammer and your work and the team's work and our school board's work is the recognition. One of the things I've heard is that our folks feel recognized, whether that's with that new employee, with our Substitute Day, or the variety of other things that are being instituted, the ribbon cutting, and I think that was always there, that recognition piece, but now putting that forefront and center and making sure that it's public and folks are aware of the support that's out there. And so I want to thank the board and Dr. Hammer for that, as well as those, our staff who've gone through some transition. We mentioned James Wood and Indian Hollow, and never seem to skip a beat as things, maybe new challenges or obstacles. One of our qualities is adaptability and flexibility, right? And so our staff do that just the same and never complain about it, so want to thank them. And also want to really thank you, Dr. Hammer, for not being afraid to come in and say, hey, let's make some adjustments, and for our staff of saying yes, if, you know, we're student-centered, we want to make those adjustments along the way, and that Transition Day, I think, is a testament to everybody getting on board, making that happen so quickly, and then we hear the outcome of folks who have young people that experience that, and hopefully will lead to a better experience for those students in the school. So with that, I'll entertain a motion if there is one.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Motion has been properly seconded to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.